...a meeting of the Board of Selectmen and Licensing Commissioners for the town of North Anover for Monday, September 14th. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of minutes from August 31st.
Madam Chair, I motion that we have taken minutes from our prior meeting.
There was a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item on our agenda, we are moving to Communication and Announcements. We are moving...
My understanding was...
I don't know if this was officially presented to us, but I guess Marie Pedo, who was supposed to be introduced this evening, is suffering from a respiratory infection. And so Kathy Darby stuck her head in just before this meeting began to say that she would not be here.
That's okay, we will reschedule her.
If you're allergic to dogs.
That's great. Huh? She's a dog, John. Is she allergic to dogs?
I'm sleepy.
Oy vey. We also have an announcement in regards to some changes to our Board of Selectmen meeting dates that will be coming up.
We had scheduled the November 2nd. Is that the correct date, Laurie?
November 2nd meeting that I know that Decalagira will have difficulty making. The following week, I believe, one of the members may be on vacation, and the week after that, there'll be another meeting. I would recommend that if you could reschedule that meeting some day in that same week.
Yep.
It wouldn't throw us off so much. We're about the, I'm going to be forwarding to the board, the budget calendar, we're getting closely developing that. It's going to be a pretty aggressive schedule, so I don't want to throw the dates too far off. So I'd recommend that if you want to reschedule the Monday, November 2nd, it'd be done sometime during that week.
Do we need to do that this evening, or can we...
You can chew it up, chew it around a little bit, and give us some general sense of what you think you're going to do, but whatever feedback, or you can provide me feedback individually at a later date, whatever you'd like.
Okay. We can bounce it around via email?
Yeah.
Just send individual emails to me.
Individual emails in regards to the November 2nd, if the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday works for everybody.
We usually do it when this happens, we usually do it the Tuesday.
Because of vacation on the Tuesday, yeah.
Yeah, is that, does that...
Is that an election?
I honestly can't...
I'm on business travel.
Yeah, he's traveling.
You're on business travel the following week?
Yeah, the week of the night.
I think what Rosemary was assuming was the Tuesday, the same week.
The 3rd.
Oh, the same week, I'm sorry.
Tuesday, the 3rd?
Yes. That's, in the past, that's always seemed to work.
That works for me, but...
No, I think I can do that. My schedule's on my car. If we have to decide right now...
Should we pencil that in for now?
Pencil that in for now, and we can confirm at Selectmen Decalagira at a later date. Don't worry about it. You have a very busy month coming up and a very busy life ahead of you. We can confirm, get your sleep now.
There's a lot of sensitivity to it, what's going on there.
So we will, we can confirm that, but for now, pencil in the 3rd.
So while we're talking about meetings, and I know there's been various times you've mentioned what's going to happen in this building beginning in December-ish, but based on some of the information we're getting back from our architects, it's likely I'm going to recommend we move our meetings. This room will remain untouched, but I'm really concerned about access to the room from a capacity perspective. I'm concerned that although we'd be able to access the room, our capacity would be limited because the means of egress would be limited. And so I don't want to have a meeting where you get a large turnout and we have to turn people away.
Okay.
So we're talking to the school folks about using their new room, which is, has all the cameras. They've penciled in.
Tiny, though.
It's about half the size, but it can hold more if we need it to.
Okay.
And they've penciled that in for us. They've indicated that if we wanted on those Monday nights for the 12 months or so, they'd be more than happy to have us there. And so it's likely that's where we're going, but you'll hear more from me on that. And I need to talk to the other boards about, the other boards that meet, the land use boards that meet during the week, to find them some alternative venues as well.
What about the police station? Don't they have a meeting room for some of those smaller?
Smaller than the school building.
Right, but I mean, but for some of the other land use boards and what have you that don't generally bring in?
We need to talk to North Anover Cam to see if they can put more fixed camera locations in the senior center, because that's a common secondary spot for some of the land use. So if we see we can broadcast live from the senior center, we obviously have the lower room at the library. We have a number of different places.
Okay.
But it would seem that the new school administration building is probably going to be our home, and some of the land use boards may end up there as well. The only night for them that's obviously penciled in is the Thursday nights, because they have meetings on Thursday nights.
Okay, thank you. More to come. Job posting and vacancy log. If anyone has questions for Mr. Mailer. These jobs are always posted on our website as well, correct?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Moving on to cons... No. Any other communications?
Again, just a reminder that the North Anover Women's Club is celebrating 80 years, and with a high T, at the North Anover Stevens Day. It sounds high T, all fancy, but it isn't. It's just a really lovely event, and the last day for ticket sales will be Thursday morning. But it's, we've got a tea gourmet company coming in, caterer, and we have a show from Acting Out, and we have a tea expert, and it should be really a very nice event. So call me if you're interested in tickets, but the last day is on Thursday for ticket sales. That's it.
Can I have one? North Anover Merchants Association Fall Festival, I think it's the 5th fill or the 4th? 4th or 5th?
4th.
4th. The annual Fall Festival is coming up, and it's going to be on the Town Common, September 26th, from 10:00 to 4:00. Really always a fun time, and all the proceeds benefit the North Anover Middle School After School Robotics STEM Program, and everyone's a player. So there's merchants tents, food vendors, kids' zones, games, pumpkin decorating, pony rides, paint, face painting, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I hope everyone can stop by on the Common, right in the center of town, and it's usually a great festival.
Also, in conjunction with that, St. Vincent de Paul will be holding their annual Walk for the Poor in the morning, so we'll be sharing the space in the morning, so come early and...
Stay all day.
Stay all day, yeah.
We have a first day like we did last year.
Fingers crossed. Also, under Communication and Announcements, Mr. Mailer is going to show us with some of the West Mill.
Thank you. So we know that, have communicated in the past, the fact that there's going to be, that RCG purchased the West Mill, they currently own the East Mill where Jamie's is. There's some work proposed there, there's certainly has been back and forth with the planning boards, some zoning changes made at the last town meeting, discussions with community development, and so that work is progressing. If you sort of popped up on the screen here, if you could see it, is up above, I'm sorry, I try to fit everything into one screen, but up above is the schematic of some of the site changes to, I guess everybody's left is the Davidson Furber Building, the Long Building. Water Street runs alongside of the left of that. There'll be residential lofts, market rate residential lofts in what's identified as Building 4, the second half of the back half of Building 4. What you see in the middle is really the lodges transformation, and the photo down below gives you a good aerial sense of what's being changed, so that the entire middle building, I don't know if you can see my, if you can see this on the screen, but this middle section here, the vast majority of that is being removed. This, so this area here will become where the hand is currently, it'll be surface parking to support some of the new businesses that'll be placed in all these buildings here. Surface parking in a view directly back to the pond that's here. This structure will be taken down, which is currently a warehouse building here. The retained building is really the Converse Building. These are not historic buildings. I think sometimes it gets to be some confusion about this. These were buildings constructed in the last 20 or 30 years. It's really interesting and exciting to watch a developer who recognizes that in order to gain value on the property, they actually need to take down square footage. They have a good vision for the space, they're doing some heavy marketing here, and are reserving this particular spot, which will be part of the building that's demolished, so they can build a spec building for a future tenant. So I wanted residents to see, sort of get a visual of what's happening there, and to sort of head off some questions that people may have, that they believe that what will come down in terms of the demolition is in fact historic when it's not. So there is no limitation here, this is a newer building coming down, and again, the surface parking will enhance the value from a retail and commercial basis, because currently the parking, as everybody can see in the lower photo, is way out here, and it can make it difficult at times. I do believe in the long term, RCG will plan on developing this location as well, and the same across the street at the East Mill. So I figured I'd present this to the board and to the public so they could see what's happening beginning of the next several weeks. A lot of the work is, the town's infrastructure work is nearing completion. Decorative lighting is going to be going in over the next month or so, so the town has completed work along Water Street and High Street to improve the streetscape there, and then the developer is obviously committing significant amount of energy, effort, and dollars to improve the site as well, sorry. So I figured the public may want to take a look at that.
Okay.
So when do you, I don't know if I missed this, when is it supposed to start?
The demolition should be anywhere from a week to a month away, so they're approaching quickly the demolition part, then obviously the surface improvements would follow quickly after that.
Any other communications or announcements? No? Okay, moving on to consent items. First consent item is an appointment of Andrew G. Mitchell to the Sustainability Committee.
So we sat down with Andrew about a week and a half ago. He had expressed just an interest to join one of our boards, and it seemed that he had a lot of passion and energy that he'd bring to the Sustainability Committee. I actually had the opportunity after meeting with Andrew to sit down with the co-chair, Michael Carney, of that committee, and they really would like more members. They have an ambitious, they have an ambitious agenda. They don't have a limitation to the number of participating members that they can have. So I know right now they seem to have a core group of four to five members. They're really excited about Andrew's interest. Hopefully we're able to appoint him, and hopefully we get many more people interested sending their resumes to Lori Berzleth, so. I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Andrew G. Mitchell to the Sustainability Committee for a term ending June 30th, 2017.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome aboard, Mr. Mitchell, and thank you. As they always say, we'd come to a screeching halt without our volunteers.
It's true.
B, under consent items, is actually the increase in billing rates, and we're going to move this to our September 28th meeting.
Yes.
Moving on to Columbia Gas Massachusetts, they have requested to excavate 10 East Water Street to replace the gas main. They just need a motion on this. I don't believe anyone's here from there, and it's not, it's just a motion, right?
Move approval?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're looking for the, oh, the approval and execution of the documents for the Brad Street. Would you like to elaborate on that, Mr. Mailer?
Madam Chairman, as you may recall, in December of 2014, the Lynn Development Agreement and the purchase sale were completed to transfer the ownership of the Brad Street School to the new ownership group that was selected by the segment about two years earlier. As a result of that, you saw the demolition of the building and the beginning of the construction. This next phase, which in essence is the end of what I would call the legal phase, is the completion or execution by the Board of Selectmen, the developer, and the funding agencies of a tripartite agreement that binds the funding sources, which is Pentucket Bank, largely underwritten by Mass Development, binds Mass Development and Pentucket Bank to the developer and to the town, to make sure that all of us are on the same page in regards to making sure that the development that happens down there at Brad Street is consistent with what the board voted on, whatever that day was, two, two and a half years ago.
Yeah.
So with the execution of these documents this evening, that's the end of the sort of legal phase, and as everybody can see, the construction, first of the residential piece followed by the commercial piece, has already begun. So I'd support these documents. We have spent somewhere close to nine months completing this, just like it took about a year to complete the previous documents, and they represent really the consummation of the final deal between all the parties.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, please do.
Make a motion that the clerk read this into record.
One word at a time.
I don't think we have a second. So, moving right along. We do need a motion that the...
Madam Chair, I move that the Board of Selectmen approve and sign the tri...
Ooh, that's a tough word. Tripartite agreement and First Amendment to Land Development Agreement for the Brad Street project as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's very exciting.
Yeah, congratulations, it's a lot of work.
Lot of work, congratulations, and it's exciting for downtown. Moving in the right direction.
Motion to move to the House.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are now in licensing.
Okay, we're now in licensing. First up, we have four requests from Smolak Farms for some various events coming up.
Yes, along with many others.
Yeah.
Excuse me, I'm sick, so I apologize, my sound terrible, very, we've been running ragged, so I have no voice much, so.
You don't talk that much.
Yeah.
What's your want?
The only one I think we're concerned about that we had was during the week, which was the one on October 1st, from 3:00 to 8:00. There is no entertainment. The bar will go till 8:00 PM. They usually done by 7:00. I think all the other licenses weren't any concerns, that was the only one, which was for Michael Lombard, Attorney Lombard. It's his second year doing it, and it's a great event, no issues.
Yeah, that does become a bit of a problem. Well, May to October, so this is, was the date October 2nd? Because your license is only until 7:00 o'clock.
That's for the entertainment, the alcohol can go, last month we approved it till 8:00. The alcohol doesn't go past 8:00 PM. Normally, events can go to 9:00 during the week, but because of the fact there is no, I just do the alcohol side.
You're right, I was, I'm sorry, I wasn't...
That's okay.
I wanted to do the entertainment license.
Just so we're clear, I think we're concerned with latitude to approve it, but in this case, the one-day liquor licenses are tied to your entertainment license.
Okay, I don't pull those, and I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to be clear about it, the liquor license in this case is, is part and parcel of the entertainment license. That's how the board has viewed those, under the same statute. So I think the board has some latitude to do that, as long as it probably was a motion that entertainment would not be included, but as it relates to one-day liquor licenses in Smolak Farms, they, those are linked to the entertainment license. That's where you have to be cautious.
All right, so should I be pulling the entertainment license then, or just Smolak should be handling that? Because I just do the alcohol side of it. During the week, because it is a school night, it is the time of the year, I know at this point, if there is any entertainment, it ends at 7:00, and the alcohol's been allowed to go the extra hour till 8:00, like we approved last month.
Do they have a standard entertainment license?
Yes.
Goes to 7:00, but then the entertainment license goes to 7:00. So they don't standard meaning...
Yeah, I was about to say, they have a license for entertainment license, so...
They have an entertainment license.
In fact, you're just going to pull it again, I didn't think we had to do that.
Yeah, that's, I mean, you don't pull entertainment licenses.
We have one for the whole...
Yeah, they have it for the whole season, I just didn't, I wanted to clarify that to make sure.
The entertainment license is in force, and what you're here for is a liquor license for that time.
With the extended for now.
I think what Andrew was saying was that they usually run in conjunction, usually you honor the times, you know, and they kind of stay together, but we do have, in this case, since there's no entertainment, then we can allow, or if we choose, so choose, we can allow it to go.
Thursday, I think that's the only concern is during the week. This is a staff appreciation party, so it's never, they don't do any entertainment at all.
Or did you pull the license?
Okay, yes.
Okay, any other questions?
Move that the Board of Selectmen acting as Licensing Commissioners approve the three one-day all-alcohol licenses of Smolak Farms for events on September 18th, 6:00 to 10:00, October 1st, 3:00 to 8:00, and October 2nd, 5:00 to 10:00, as presented, and a wine and malt license for Smolak Farms for a baby shower on September 27th, from 12:00 to 6:00 PM.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay, and we have a one-day liquor license, or malt, I'm sorry, malt, malt and wine license for a campus block party in the Sacagawas parking lot on September 18th, 2015, at Merrimack College, from 5:00 to 11:00 PM. I don't see anyone from Merrimack here to talk to this, so do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, and now we have a continuation from a public hearing from our last meeting. We have, the hearing is still open. We had a presentation of the facts by the North Anover Police Department. The license holder, through his attorney, had agreed or stipulated to the facts as presented, so we have not required the police to come back, so we have, what we've done, Mr. Alom, I believe, is this Mr. Alom? You have now an opportunity to speak to the board if you'd like, and we can ask questions. You can't call any witnesses at this point, or question the witnesses that were here last time.
I just have a point of order, I think we'll continue hearing.
We may want to swear in Mr. Alom, obviously.
You saw which one is to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not the part of the truth. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
So, once again, Brian Vaughn of Smolak and Vaughn for Mr. Alom, who is the manager. I wanted to kind of pick up where we left off last week, because one of the issues that the board had raised or requested was that we try to have Mr. Azaz appear at today's hearing as well, which I just want to be clear, because it's a credibility issue as well to my client, and it's very important, I think, that we kind of straightened out the facts a little bit. Some confusion was raised with respect to Mr. Azaz's address, and I believe on the police report, it was identified as 318 Second Street. And I believe the testimony of the police was that it was an address which appeared on their record from a prior incident. After that meeting, it kind of dawned on me that, gee, I'm not sure I'm familiar with the 318 Second Street. So I drove down Second Street, and there is no 318 Second Street. Mr. Azaz owns a home, which is 316, 318 Sutton Street. My guess is that the language barrier, there was a confusion when they were interviewing Mr. Azaz after the incident, and he said 318 Sutton, when in fact, they wrote 318 Also, as to this issue, I asked Alom about the prior incident, and how was it that Mr. Azaz was interviewed by the police? Because I wanted to confirm the facts after we spoke, because as it was presented to me, Mr. Azaz was staying with Mr. Alom as a guest in his home, was a friend of Mr...
And where is that home?
355 Sutton Street.
But Mr. Azaz owns property on Sutton Street also?
Mr. Azaz, no, no.
Oh, I thought you just...
Mr. Alom. Mr. Alom owns both 316, 318 Sutton Street and 355 Sutton Street. So, so Mr. Azaz had been staying with him, as I reported to you last week, as a son of a dear friend from, I believe, Bangladesh, I'm not certain of that fact, you can ask Mr. Alom if you want to clarify that. But the, in discussing with Mr. Alom, I asked further about, well, gee, what was this prior incident, prior police incident which was caused, which causes? Because it seems curious to me that within a matter of being here for a couple of weeks, there was a prior police incident. And Mr. Alom had told me that just a matter of a few days before this, there was a coincidental occurrence where Mr. Azaz was at the laundromat downtown and was physically assaulted by another resident of town. The other resident's sister, in fact, reported it to the police, and this was a prior incident which happened to occur two days prior, or I'm not sure exactly, two days, a few days prior while he was staying as a guest in Mr. Alom's home. So I just think that that's kind of an important fact to straighten out, because I will admit, when I left after the last hearing, I thought to myself, gee, this doesn't necessarily compute with everything that I was told, and in fact, I think it, the story does pass muster and does make sense, and of course, you can ask Mr. Alom any further details as to that. The other, I think...
Let me just say, so thank you for clarifying that, but Mr. Azaz was not able to be here tonight?
No, no. And Mr. Azaz, I in fact, attempted to reach out to Mr. Azaz directly, and called the phone number, and Mr. Alom had reported to me previously that he had tried, he had been trying to get in contact with him a number of times, and that his phone, when he tried calling him, had a message that the cell phone was not in service. When I did attempt to reach him, a woman answered the phone and told me that I had the wrong, the wrong number. So as it had been reported to me previously by Mr. Alom, that night after this incident occurred where the Mr. Azaz sold the beer to the underage individual, Mr. Alom was very upset, because he cares, you know, obviously this is his business, and he's been operating for a long time, and he got very angry, and he hasn't actually spoken to Mr. Azaz since this night, and had basically kind of kicked him out of his store, sort of, that evening, and that sort of ended the relationship. And again, you know, we're, you know, we're not arguing the facts, Mr. Alom is, you know, he cares about his reputation, he takes this very seriously, and it was a mistake, the circumstances under which, how it occurred, it was that, again, he was stocking shelves, and he had asked him to watch the counter for him, and had told him not to sell any alcohol, and in fact, he did. And he has taken some steps to try to mitigate for problems in the future in terms of buying the card con technology. I think one other thing that I would like to raise is just, you know, Mr. Alom has been a member of this community for a long time, he's put two children through North Anover High School. He cares about his reputation in this community. He, you know, it's interesting, I've had the opportunity, obviously, to speak with him much more than you will, and you're free to, again, of course, ask him questions, but he is a very well-respected individual in Bangladesh, and in the Bangladesh community. He happens to be a professor, he has a master's in accounting. He was a professor in accounting for 10, 10 years at a collegiate level in Bangladesh before coming to the United States. He was an honorary professor, he actually founded a high school. He, you know, he was, even since he's been here, he's been elected as the General Secretary of the Greater New England Bangladesh Community, which is a membership of 15,000 people. People do make mistakes, and he's going to tell you tonight that he made one, but he's, since 2004, running that store, he's had, hasn't had an incident since 2004 running that store where he's sold alcohol to an underage individual. I know, I, you know, it's interesting listening to some of the comments that the board made last week, or two weeks ago, with, you know, another incident that occurred in town, where, you know, people talked about, oh, I've been to this restaurant, and, you know, my children have been carded. Well, I know that I've been to this convenience store myself a number of times, and I've always been carded here. So, you know, I would just request that you consider that, yes, mistakes do happen, but under the, under the circumstances, you know, 11-year track record is pretty good to have no underage sales in this community, so. I don't know if you want to ask any questions, Mr. Alom?
Mr. Alom, would you like to make a statement, or say anything?
Good evening, Honorable Chairman and all honorable... Good evening, Honorable Chairman and all honorable councilwoman and men and ladies and gentlemen. I am first, I'd like to say everybody, I am very, very sorry whatever accident happened that day. And first, also I'd like to thank you to everybody to help and cooperation doing business from 2011 North Andover. And also I'd like to thanks all residents of North Andover to help the business. Whatever that day happened, really I was very sick for a couple of days and I don't have any employee. Mr. Azaz came to visit us and so me and my wife all the time work, that time I don't have any employee. And also, as I said, that uncle, all the time I have to sit down in the home, I feel bored, so I can stay with you in the store. Yeah, you can come. And that day I asked him, I went in the cooler to a stocking the shelf, then I asked him, if any customer come, please call me. But in the meantime, he don't call me, sell to the beer. When I came out from the cooler, the two police officer came in, even I don't know that time what happened. Then police officer told me that, one of which I know very well, he told me that it's sold to the beer on the race. Then they are not here, all police officer, two police officer. In front of them, I seriously charged him and I was very angry, why you sold to the beer? I was very mad and the police officer know that about that. And I asked him, go to home. And really for that accident, I take all responsibility for that. And some of you and lot of North Andover employee and police officer come my store as a regular customer. Even I hire any employee, I first they are trading, if I come as a customer myself to buy the beer or wine or cigarette, ask me ID. If I cannot show you ID, you not sell anything. Beer and wine and cigarette especially. That's why me and my wife all the time work. And lot of customer, they are mad, even they come every day, I ask every time ID. Then couple of days before, one regular customer almost nine years, he's almost over 60 years, when I asked ID, you are crazy, every time I, from last seven years I meet customer. You ask every time ID. I'm sorry, sir, this is the law, without ID I cannot sell to beer. And he left, he don't buy the beer and he said that I will never come to your store. So I'm sorry, sir, for that, whatever you think. But my duty, my responsibility to check ID, make sure, that's why last almost 10 years, never anything, we sell any beer and wine or cigarette. So however, whatever accident happen, I take all responsibility and I feel myself very ashamed and I'm very sorry for, to all of you and my wife also, very sorry for that. So this is mine. If you have any questions, you can ask me, that's it.
First, I appreciate you coming in tonight and I think, you know, as the license holder and as the business owner, you definitely have a responsibility for anybody that gets behind that counter. And, you know, to put somebody back there that is not trained or doesn't understand the licensing laws and they have to do that, that was somewhat irresponsible to do that. And, you know, and that's obviously why we're here tonight. So as the license holder, I understand you take responsibility for that and you should. It was just, you know, we certainly take licensing and the sale of alcohol very seriously in this town and in our laws, you know, to prevent underage drinking. So as the license holder, you know, obviously we have to, you are responsible for that and we're very, we need to really, you know, be careful about what we do. So and as the license holder, you were responsible for that person behind the counter. And that person should have been trained and certified and understood the laws. Even if you told him not to sell to anybody, it doesn't matter. He was behind that counter and he was the one who was in charge of those sales. But, you know, thank you for your honesty in coming out tonight. I'll open up to the board for other questions or questions.
I can't remember if we asked this last time. What is the store's position on being tip-certified?
I'm sorry, I am hearing problem.
I'm sorry. I can speak up.
Yeah, we have a certificate, trading certificate.
Oh, yes, yes ma'am.
And does every employee, are they tip-certified or just yourself? How many employees do you have?
Right now, me and my husband, we both-
Right now, just I took the, I took the course and I passed that exam. And my wife, because she cannot make time, so that's why she have a plan next to, she will take it.
Okay, but again, how many employees do you have that work-
Right now, I have one employee part-time.
So there's three of you that could possibly sell liquor, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. But you only, one of them is tip-certified at this point, right now? Were you tip-certified before this incident?
People, we have both of us, my one is spare, I think taking his one, I will take my one. I am going to take my one. I took before.
Well, the question again, I'm having a hard time hearing as well, so between-
How many of your employees are certified?
I already, I already take the certificate, tip certificate. My wife have a plan to take it, she can make time, she will take this one. I did before also, my wife did before.
How about the employee, is the employee certified?
Yes.
With certification?
No, he is only, we hired two weeks ago, part-time.
Part-time.
That's why he wait.
All of ours.
So they have, he has 45 days from what I'm being told to be, to get that certification, that tip certification?
Forty-five days, yeah, only two weeks I hired him, two days, he working two days, Saturday, Sunday, they can, we can send him, yeah.
If you ask, they are working part-time, not full-time, if you ask me, I can ask them to take the tip certificate course.
Well, I think they need to within 45 days, they should get tip-certified within 45 days. Whether it's part-time or full-time, if they're behind that counter and they're selling alcohol. And I think Mr. Vaughn also said you bought a machine now to-
Yeah.
Yeah, I also bought the ID checker machine.
ID checker is a card con machine and it's, I've got the paperwork on it if you care to see.
I also bought that, after that accident.
Okay.
Mr. Alam?
What happens in the future if you get sick or there's a reason that you can't be at work, who do you get to cover the store for you if it's only you and your wife, really, that are working full-time?
That then, why an accident happened, me and my wife.
So-
No, we have question. Sorry, he has a hearing problem.
He has a hearing problem.
If you sick next time, who cover for you was the store? Me and you and me working, if you sick, he has a question. If you sick, you can have to come store, who cover your store?
I think that that also is part of the reason why they just hired a part-time employee as well. And part of Mr. Alam's more recent health issues are actually stress-related and so I think that's partly why they've hired a part-time employee and they're looking to get more support staff. Obviously, the procedure was not in place previously as this incident demonstrated and they're trying to work to resolve it.
Because you can see, it wasn't you that, you that specifically sold the alcohol. And there's not a doubt in my mind because I've also experienced your services well to know that you do ID whenever I go in. But I also know that being somebody who's responsible for that business and the amount of hours that you're open, given the situation that we have, that happened with this young man where he happened to be in the store helping you and it doesn't even seem that we can, I know we can't speak to him, I know that he ended up leaving and that you can't, you know, you no longer have a relationship with him. But it kind of removes the stick if we can always just blame it on an employee and never take responsibility ourselves. Just so, I see both sides of this and so I was just wondering what type of safeguards were being put in place, not necessarily just with tip or checking ID. I would say that the big problem, at least from my perspective, is that it would seem that you often have irregular employees in there at times. Or you might find yourself in the position where you have irregular employees selling alcohol.
How old is, I'm sorry, you then?
No, no, that's just-
How old is your new part-time employee?
He is 60, around 60.
60, 60, okay. Again, I'm, you're having a hard time because he has a hearing problem. It's the overhead airs.
Sixty, sixty years old he is. He working also market basket, I think.
Okay.
He working two days right now.
He's also a school teacher of North Lawrence.
Lawrence School.
Okay. I just wanted to see that he was of age.
Yeah, he is. Now, we looking for full-time employee.
We are looking for full-time, sir, also, and whatever you ask me, I understand that. If very emergency situation, if I am sick, we will help. My, we have other store in Merrimack, that store have also beer and wine. My sister-in-law and my brother-in-law work over there. Then couple of days, last couple of days, I was sick, my sister-in-law help two days and my brother-in-law help one day because they are trained up and that store have also liquor license, we own that store also.
But if they come to help you here, are they tip-certified?
Yeah, they do.
They are also tip-certified.
Okay.
They do.
Merrimack?
Did the Merrimack?
Merrimack, Mass.
Oh, Merrimack.
Merrimack, Mass. Same store, same name.
Any other questions or comments? Any other thing that you'd like to say before we close the hearing? Okay, if there's no other comments or questions, I'll have a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the hearing is now closed. We now need to make a motion as to whether or not we feel that a license violation occurred at Artis.
We move that the Board of Select and find that on May 28th, 2015, at Richdale, Artis Corner, 4 Main Street, a liquor license violation did occur pursuant to Town of North Andover Alcoholic Beverages Regulations and 204 CMR 2.052 permitting an illegality of the licensed premises to wit Chapter 138, Section 34, sale or delivery of an alcoholic beverage to a person under 21 years of age.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion or any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed? Okay, so we have come to the, made a motion included that a liquor license did occur on, on May 28th at Artis Corner, Richdale. We now have the ability to impose penalty for that. I, in this case, I know this isn't the first time, although it was a number of years ago, I would recommend personal suspension of the license. The amount and dates of that, I guess we can discuss, but that would be my personal opinion.
One more time, please, I'm sorry. What number?
I haven't given a number.
Oh, okay.
I just said, I just said because of past violations that I, in this case, would, and I know they're not, we're not within 60 months, so they can't build on each other, but there was past violations, that I would recommend a suspension of the liquor license for a period of time that we can discuss.
I have a couple of comments. There's two things here. The 19-year-old that went in there to get, to buy the alcohol, I'm not worried about that, that's entrapment as far as I'm concerned. It's having an employee work that doesn't, is not working, that is what I'm hanging my head on. I mean, this, I, you know, it could be bad time spent in going around trying to catch people, especially, you should be working on drugs somewhere doing that, but what concerns me, what concerns me is the, somebody working there who is not an employee, that is, that is really, really bothering me.
So I just want to address your comment about entrapment. I think the-
That's my personal feels.
Okay, it's your opinion, but I think the, the, the whole operation was done in respect to Massachusetts General Laws and it was done within the law and it was done on a grant that was given to the town. So there was nothing, entrapment is not a word that I would use on this.
Why do?
Well, you can, but it's, I don't, I mean, it was a-
To be clear, does that meet the legal definition of an entrapment?
Right, it was legally done operation, so it was not entrapment.
But I do think, I want to second what Selectman Stewart says, I mean, that's, I'm not as concerned about, I think 11 years is sufficient time. I mean, I understand that there's a lot of things that can happen in the span of 11 years and so I, I'm not so quick to judge them based on the 2004 incident, but I definitely am hung up as well on the fact that this is, we're here tonight, we're talking about this issue all because somebody who sold the alcohol was not an actual full-time employee and the concern that somebody could just go stand behind the counter and provide alcohol to an individual underage who in turn could go and provide that alcohol, I mean, it could have been a 30-pack, for instance, to how many other teenagers. So I agree with you, Dawn, on that one.
When you go with this as far as days, I have no clue. I used to be a hang-in judge, not anymore, I'm older.
You mellowed?
Yeah, mellowed.
But we have the way, if we decide to, I mean, so some of the, some of our options are to a written warning, as we did with the last license violation, or we can suspend the license anywhere from one to five days and then the dates on those of which we can determine as we go forward. So does anyone have a motion or a suggestion? We can start at the top and say five days and work on-
I mean, I think, we don't want to forget the fact that this, yeah, this is a local business in town. It's a, I think, by and large, a responsible business, but I may definitely agree with your sentiment that if, if we want to, you know, just send a message about the seriousness of it without actually harming the business, I would lean towards the one day if we're talking about actual suspensions. I would not, I personally would not be voting for anything over one day.
I would not support five days. Basically, there's a reset of, 11 years is a long time for this particular incident. That's a long time. So I would not, but I am very uncomfortable about unfortunately, whether you knew it or not, the person who was behind that counter was a little bit cavalier in his, he didn't listen to what you were, told him to do and thought he was going to be the store manager for that moment or whatever, but that, that makes me very uncomfortable.
I think we all concur that it's not so much the violation, it's the lack of judgment in putting someone behind that counter that wasn't-
Wasn't trained.
Wasn't trained.
Or didn't seem to have the same responsibility that the owner did and the manager did towards the safety of the public by selling to an underage person.
And the owner, he did his due diligence, he said to the employee, don't do this. And that's what he will be saying to all future employees too, and they all have the same ability potentially to not see the same repercussions that I guess an owner or somebody invested in the business would.
I do like the fact that you are carding everybody that comes in, even at the risk of potentially losing a customer. I think it's the safest route to go. Many establishments, you know, you could have total gray hair and they're going to card you. And there's no harm in that, you just tell everyone, we card everybody.
Okay, so does someone care to make a motion then to the, to what we would impose as a penalty? It sounds like we're leaning towards something less than five days and something more than a warning.
More than one.
So let's, let's talk about what we want to, what we want to do to send this message.
Mr. Jim, before a motion is made, if a motion is made relative to suspension identifying the day or days of the week is mellowed.
Thank you.
The day of the event was a Thursday.
Does it matter the date? Does it matter the date?
No, doesn't, that's your call, but I just figured as background, the day that it was a Thursday.
No, we, we've actually.
No, the day that the event happened, the day, it was May 28th, okay.
We've done that in the past.
We have done that.
To repeat offenders.
We have.
We've chosen the days.
We've taken away license?
Yes, we have.
Never comes to think. Well, I would then move that the Board of Select and impose the penalty of a one-day suspension to occur on a Tuesday.
On a Tuesday, okay. What day, a specific date?
I don't know, I'm thinking, not a Friday or a Saturday, so Tuesday.
Okay, so.
Do you have a date?
I don't, I'm looking for a calendar. The 29th of September, or?
Okay, so there's a motion on the table for a one-day suspension on the 29th of September to be carried out. Any other, out of that motion? Any other, anything else that we can stipulate from that motion? Like tip certification?
Oh, I, I mean, I would, yeah, could I, I don't know, can I do that in a motion? That all employees should be tip certified within 45 days of employment? I don't think that's unreasonable. That's what the rule is, period, right?
And trained in the use of the, of the ID checker.
And the ID checker.
So we have a motion for a one-day suspension on September 29th pursuant to also all employees, old and new, to be tip certified within 45 days and to be trained in the use of the ID checker that you have purchased. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I, you'll be receiving a letter from this board with respect to the decision that was made tonight. And Mr. Vaughn, I'll send you a copy as well, as the attorney.
We wish you luck. We hope that you follow these procedures and if you do, you won't be back. But just remember too, I always tell everybody, the out-of-state licenses, you can't rely on them. You can't say, well, this, this license was good. Out-of-state licenses are not, cannot be used as actual proof of age in your defense. But if you have the machine, it certainly does go a long way. But don't come back. Don't come back, please. This is not fun for us, nor you, obviously.
Okay, so I'll have a motion to, to come out of licensing.
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Okay, we're now at license and we are back to the chair.
Okay, we're no old business, no new business. Any public comments? Thank you. Have a good night.
Continue to be well.
No public comment. Town managers report.
I did once get asked the question of when the budget process in municipal governance begins. Once upon a time. And believe it or not, it begins right about now. So we're beginning the budget process for fiscal '17. And although for this board and I, it'll begin in the rest of the next couple of weeks, rather than it'll take a while to ramp up. Residents should know, we begin one fiscal year on July 1st and then start the budget process associated with the next fiscal year.
Two months.
Eight or nine or 10 weeks later. So we certainly, it always seems like we're in the budget process. So we're going to begin that, including the Selectmen's Strategic Planning Session, which should take place the next couple of weeks.
Phil has a very busy agenda for the next couple of weeks.
For people at home who don't know, he's soon to be a father again. So very exciting times at the Decollegiero.
Hopefully she arrives right on time. So that way, it doesn't mess up this meeting, because I know we're trying to find this day.
Waiting, waiting on the store.
She would do that, I hope not.
Mr. Mayor, do I have a?
It is a scheduled one.
Yes, it's a scheduled C-section. She's supposed to be unscheduled, so.
Any, any news on the, the website?
Yes, it's great, great segue. Next meeting, I believe it'll be the next meeting, possibly the meeting after. Our IT director who's doing, we have pulled in about a million different directions, will come and, and roll out what has been a modified website, some enhancements. So if you've been on the website recently, you've seen some subtle changes. We are going to be migrating from the product we use electronically to report incidents. And then we've incorporated some of those changes into our own product where residents will be able to go on the website and report similarly, issues, concerns, complaints. We've developed that, the IT director has been the, you know, spearheading that, coming out of the last meeting that we had, and we talked about that. I've gained input from other people in the shop. And then we're going to be doing some training so that employees will be comfortable, so that if a resident calls and says, "I want to report this, but I'm not as comfortable using the computer."
Or they might not have one.
But they may not have one, then we'll be using the same system to report that. It'll give them an opportunity to track what happens with that concern. And so we've looked at a couple of other websites, there's a couple of other products. And as part of what Chris McClure will do, at the next meeting or the meeting after that, we'll be roll out some of the updates to the website and then this option on the web page where folks can report, but still have the option on a handset to have what we believe is an upgraded product. So if people like to do that electronically on the road, they'll be able to do that as well.
Yep.
How about the migration to the new domain? Are you nearing that too?
We're, we're, Chris, Chris has a few balls in the air. So we're slowly migrating to the new domain. Eventually, we're going to go away from northandover.com, which is not the common domain for municipal governments, and go to northandoverma.gov. We've secured that. We will probably in perpetuity link the two, so as folks move into the northandoverma.gov domain, if someone happens to send it to northandover.com, it'll still get to us. So that's ongoing as well. We're migrating to Munis. We've done the general ledger system, we're in the process of doing the payroll system. Combined with that, the board knows that we are consolidating our payroll. So we'll have a single payroll, employee handling, school and town payroll, something that I know the board many years ago talked about. So the timing will allow us to have another one of these consolidated departments with the school, which we're very much looking forward to. We're going to be migrating to a new assessing product. We're migrating to our first-ever electronic permit tracking process. So if you go through the land use boards, you'll be able to do things electronically and follow that. And that integrates as well to our general ledger product. So there's a number of things going on, on the IT side. So Chris will talk a little bit about the reporting aspects of the customer resident concerns, but there are a number of the things that he may touch on while he's here. But one of those links to the very last item, which is the reports from the public safety agencies. Chris is working with the public safety agencies and our software providers to provide a more dynamic product. Some of the reports we get on the public safety side, there are numbers on a page. They don't necessarily provide the kind of management information we need to make decisions. And so he's working with the public safety departments and the software companies to produce a more detailed reporting, information that will be helpful on a dashboard, so we see information live. And so there's a lot of different things happening on the IT front. And we're, we've crossed 1,600 followers.
Oh, wow, fantastic.
I think it was 1,500 last time we talked, 1,600 in flying. So we, we are, I think we'll easily make 2,016 Twitter followers by probably January, by January 2016.
That's great.
Well, no, Mr. Vaughn, first can have some weekends off because we don't want to burn him out. It sounds like he's doing a lot of great work and we don't want to burn him out.
And he's slowly changing the culture here that he has some folks sitting on bouncy balls, or whatever those are called.
The good for your core.
The posture core things. Yeah, I don't have a core, so I'm going to.
Everyone's got to be. I have one.
Okay.
We watch TV.
He's changing a little bit of the culture here. That's all I have.
How easy is it for, for the boards that don't necessarily have the support of professional staff to get their information up online? Do they have to give it to Chris or?
No, there's a number of different ways to do it. One of the advantages of the web product we use is that it's, it's intended to be flexible, flexible and intended to be used by individual departments. So it's, instead of having a central sort of IT person dealing with website information, which is difficult in municipal governments because of staff, individual departments, community development, dispatch, police, fire, clerk's office, town manager's office, selectmen's office, have individual control to the website. So it's easy when departments want to do that, they can provide it, if it's a, if it's a land use board, they can provide that to, you know, Erika Fori's area, if it happens to be something that's a board that isn't, I'm just using examples, say, an assessing board, they can go to the assessing department. So it's easy enough to do, it's just a matter of, we don't have a single person constantly monitoring the web to make sure that data is up, is updated.
I agree.
Or, you know, all boards are in compliance. I think, I know that Joyce tries to keep track of that, but there's juggling a lot of balls. So it's very easy to get data up on the website. We now put more licensing data on the website than we have historically to try to upgrade that. And so as we become aware of whatever deficiencies may be raised, we, we look at other examples throughout the Commonwealth and try to update those.
Well, even like those boards, I mean, that don't necessarily have the professional staff, like those volunteer committees, the festival committees, the sustainability committees, I mean, do they have designated people that they can work with to get information up or?
Not necessarily designated people, but certainly when they, they generally know where to go. They can always go to Joyce, they, they come to our office, sometimes we post it. If it, again, if it's a land use board, they typically are dealing with community and economic development, so Bernadette updates a lot of information on that website. If it happens to be a board of health matter, they'll go to the health staff. If it happens to be something associated with the board of selectmen, they'll go to LAIRI. And a lot of them, by default, go to Joyce. So we, the only way we can maintain the website, and I know sometimes we're behind, the only way to keep even up to the pace we are at currently, is to make sure that there are multiple people doing it. If we gave one person website responsibilities, we, they just couldn't juggle it with other, through other roles.
And then on that, on the flip side of that coin, you have to be careful about how much access you give out too, because people's jobs changes and change and then you still have that access out there, which is, you know, like I think you may be alluding to that some people on some of these boards may need access, but, you know, those boards change a lot too.
Yeah, it wouldn't make sense as much if the boards have access unless it happens to be, for instance, the VinCon, the secretary at the VinCon works out of the clerk's office. So in cases where the staff, secretary of the ZBA works out of community and economic development. So we do have those linkage, linkages traditionally back to staff people, the staff people work here and then have a board assignment, in which case we actually have training tutorials for the website for all employees on our intranet, our internal internet. So what we see when we log on isn't what you folks see. We have an internal network that folks get to see training videos for how to use the website. So it's one of the things that Chris has implemented. Almost all of our training now for, for the software products and different changes we're making are being filmed by North End of a Cam. We use those as tutorial videos that are posted for employees, so they can go on the internet and decide, and sort of retool themselves and see, take steps on how to, how to improve or see how to do certain things that they otherwise wouldn't. So we do a reasonable job of maintaining the website and we have the staff to do it as long as we continue to sort of delegate it to various departments.
Okay. Great, thank you for that update. Exciting stuff.
Anything else? Have a motion?
Tough loss of Mary Mac at the end.